This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council Finance Committee Budget Meeting. It's May 7th at 6:03 PM. We're having a little trouble with our overhead full table camera. So anyone tuning in remote or watching this later, you're just gonna see me, I guess.
It's not you making decisions.
Well, it is on some things. Okay, so but I'm going to share the budget anyway, so it should be fine. Okay. So yeah, we're going to start with education, then I believe with debt and interest is tonight as well. So we'll cover that afterwards. All right, so where should we start with the schools?
You can read what.
What we've sort of, I guess what we've kind of been doing is just start out with just like big picture. What's changed? What's new? What's things that you're hoping to achieve? What's things that you are worried that we should, you know, need to be aware of? Just just sort of like broad narrative and then, you know, we might have some questions about particular line items. And that will probably be.
All right. If you don't mind, I'll probably, I think I'm not going to go through the whole thing I did with the school committee, but I'll use it as a basis.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All right, so our proposed budget for FY '25 is in the amount of $20,675,577.58, which represents a 9.78% increase over the approved FY '24 budget. We are certainly aware that that is a larger than normal increase, which probably stuck out to a lot of you when you look through the city budget book. There are a lot of reasons for that, you know, kind of came together all at the same time in this particular year. A lot of it really is centered around the COVID relief grant funding running out, which the last of those grants, the SER III grant, needs to be extended by September 30th, 2024. So it's gone. It'll for us, it'll be done by the last August payroll because we do have some staff members paid out of there. So that being said, when the SER grants were written, some staff, you know, salary was written to be into those grants. Some of the staff members were moved to the grant so we could retain them. And when I say we, I mean, before I was here, I didn't write any of these grants, but I inherited them. Some of those positions were, as I said there, to, you know, to retain them and not lose them during various budget years. Others were added to help students recover from pandemic-related, you know, unfinished learning or, you know, social emotional type issues that some students have now. The goal, I believe, when those grants were written was, you know, to sunset some of those positions. But as we are, you know, getting further from the actual darkest days of the pandemic, we're finding that the student needs haven't really decreased at all. I can expand on that a little more if you want.
I wouldn't, I mean, just for the benefit of, you know, watching, like, I think I've gotten the brief version of that. But I think it is, you know, just since that is sort of at the center of this, I wouldn't mind just, you know, for the benefit of the whoever's watching.
Absolutely. So the student needs still being there sort of conflict with our enrollment being lower than it was, you know, several years ago. Pre-pandemic, our enrollment was almost 150 students higher than now. But of the, you know, the students that are here still, I mean, we lost quite a few, you know, students, just like everyone else did, some went to charter schools, some went to parochial school, some went homeschooling. And, you know, families did a lot of different things during the pandemic and they still, you know, a lot of them stuck with the changes that they made. Some of them came back. That's the way it is across the state. We're not unique there. It's not an East Hampton problem or anything. It's, that's what happened. But the students that are here still, our high needs percentage has gone up 10% over the, you know, five years that are factored in, I should say, four years that are factored in here.
Can I cut in for a second to ask you a question? When's the percent? Like, is the absolute number about the same, but it's that the kids that left were disproportionately not high needs? Or is it that the actual absolute number of high needs kids has also increased as well as sort of the denominator shrinking?
That's a good question. I think your answer there is a little bit of both, but more towards, you know, the needs of the kids that are still here being higher due to pandemic-related things. I think a lot of the families that left, that, you know, you know, particularly like, for instance, low-income students fall into the high-needs category. So folks that could afford to go to a parochial school, probably their children weren't high needs, you know, so that's one piece of it. But I think all in all, the largest driving force there is just the impacts the pandemic had on students in general. You know, particularly our youngest learners. I mean, their, you know, formative social years were spent home without social interactions are so important, you know, when you're two, three years old. So, you know, in that time, our students with disabilities increased eight points. Our low-income students increased 7.7% since the onset of COVID-19. The only group, and I get this data from the DESI website, they break it down to what they call selected population. The only group that didn't increase heavily was our English learners. That remained pretty consistent for the last several years. So bottom line, enrollments decreased, but the needs have certainly increased. I would say, and correct me if I'm wrong, superintendent, particularly in the social emotional realm, there's just, there's a lot of, you know, impacts from the pandemic that are still there. So as a result, we're finding that the positions that were in the SER III grant are still important to keep. We did move quite a few salaries off of that grant going into FY '24, you might recall. We did move some, some staff to the general fund. We were able to do that for this year, which was good because, you know, otherwise you would have had a really steep cliff and not something that was going to be able to be doable going into FY '25. So instead of a cliff, it's more of a hill, maybe a little rock if you're a skier, you know, you're going over and you got a little drop, you know, it's, it's not as steep as it would have been had we not done that going into this year. So that's one driving force for the large increase. You know, another driving force is we have unknown personnel costs going into next year. Our collective bargaining agreements with both our support staff unit and our teachers' unit expire on 6/30/24. So we're in the process now of negotiating, but this time we, you know, we don't have a settlement. So you've got unknown personnel cost increases there.
Nice question about that.
Sure.
So when you're trying to cost out what you need for salary and there's an unknown there, what's your sort of approach for handling that? What's the, is this number something that you? I'm just kind of curious how you, how you choose a number in a situation like that.
Well, you really can't choose a flat number for that because then that would be a, you know, essentially bargaining at that stage. You know, when you're bargaining with a collective bargaining unit, the word bargaining is the key word there. And if you have like a set number in your, your mind, you're not really, you know what I mean?
Let me clarify, just for the purpose of the Personnel Services line.
Sure.
Yeah, that's just, that's where I'm wondering is just how, how do you establish that? I mean, this is a question I could ask to a bunch of different departments, but just since you're at the point where timing-wise, this is happening and it's just kind of pending, I'm just sort of curious what your method is for handling that.
I mean, if I, if one, so while school has all sorts of carve-outs for financials, I mean, the one thing that we do is we assume the rate or the step increase that they would get under current contract.
Okay.
And that's start with there. So it's not as if everything is frozen, like we know regardless, but something is going to change on July 1 and we certainly aren't going to stop with, we'll just follow the contract as it rolls over. So it's, it's a reasonable expectation without predetermining negotiation.
Right.
I'd like to get that. So that's kind of where it starts.
Right.
Um, with the idea of, it's a complex, it is a complex negotiation and contract because of the unit and whatnot. So the beginning of it starts with, if the contract was another year, this is where we start and we're going to put that money into the budget.
And that's what's being requested here. Okay. That's kind of what I suspected, but I was just kind of curious how that all worked out. Okay, I'm sorry. I keep cutting you off.
Oh, no problem. Clarifying questions are good. So yeah, I really, you know, the mayor's correct to, you know, to kind of expand upon that a bit. I start my salary projections generally in November. What I'll do is I'll take the current, you know, salary matrix essentially, like who's on what step, look at, you know, who's eligible to move up a step or change a lane if they've gotten a, you know, a master's degree, let's say, from a bachelor's level. And then I figure who's going to be where and that's where you start. And you do that for all the, all the bargaining units, you know, because they all have different salary scales. So that, that's your, your basis. That's the first part of the budget building that I do. You look at any staff that might be retiring or any attrition you may have. Of course, in November, you're not going to know everything. There are pieces that move. But, you know, people come and go, so that changes too over time. And then, you know, you look if you want to add any staff or anything like that as well. This current FY '25 projected or, you know, proposed budget, we're not adding anything to it in terms of like positions that we don't currently have. There is a vacant, a position that's been vacant since November that we're cutting, but nobody's going to lose a job.
What position was that?
It was a special ed position at Mountain View. As I said, it's been vacant since November. The students there and other.
Classes that we distributed students, it was always a small number of staff there and the person that was in there resigned in November and it's very, it's a special type of class. So it was very difficult to find anybody to fill it, but we still need to meet the needs of the students. So we had to distribute them amongst other classes.
Offsetting that to an extent, we do have somebody at the high school that's returning from a year leave of absence that needed to be put back into the budget. Their position was not replaced in FY '24. They kind of just reconfigured the schedule a little bit.
Right.
Since when that was?
It's an English language, sorry, an English learner teacher position. Yeah.
I was going to ask about that.
Yeah, so that, you know, the, the students that we have now, we actually sensed the chart from DESI that I was referencing earlier, did get a couple of new families move in that have needs. And what we're finding is, I mean, Spanish is, is our largest language here, but we have a lot of like, you know, families, it just, you know, a Chinese family, a Burmese family, like, like not huge numbers of, of different languages, but we're seeing more languages than we have in, in the past few years. So, you know, it's essential to put that, you know, to have that position still there as the individual returns from the leave of absence.
I see.
Yeah.
Yes, that was a big concern of ours last year. President Gomez and I, you probably remember, we advocated for kind of keeping that position to meet the needs of our English language learners. And I'm happy that that is staying. I think that's something that's a big concern to me. I think oftentimes, English language learners, some of the first positions to be cut. And when you talk about a high need, those are some of our highest need students because not only are they trying to learn a language and trying to be successful in school, but they're also dealing with bullying in school because of that. And so to have that adult who is an advocate for them and support for them, that's, we tried really hard to advocate for that. And so just want to acknowledge that I'm truly happy to have you brought that back and we're going to keep that.
Yes, our EL staff remains level in FY '25 from what it is now, while adding the person back in. So technically more at the level. So yeah, we're, there won't be any reductions there. Some other drivers for our increases. Vocational tuition is a big one. You know, we have quite a few families that are interested in Smith VOTE rather than career tech there in West Springfield. And that's a driver. And Smith VOTE costs about $5,000 more per student than CTEC does. We have, I don't know, about probably around 10 grade nine students, I think at Smith, that maybe 11 at Smith at this point. I think only five at CTEC. But, oh, you're going to ask a question.
Well, just how, how is that exactly is that set up that they can choose between each? I mean, obviously anyone can choose.
They only choose to go to Smith if they're picking two majors. So one of it is agriculture and the other is logic and the science. So if they pick that, they get to go ninth grade, but it's like 15 kids that finally get into each of those. Out of everyone that applies, right?
Right.
So if they don't get into those two areas and they get into another area that they already have at CTEC, they have to leave Smith and go to CTEC in grade 10. That's how that works.
And CTEC has been a lot more, I don't want to say resistant, I don't know if that's the right word, but they're not accepting as many grade 10 students as they used to. So that's a factor for families if they do apply to Smith, you know, they, they might have to, you know, if they don't end up being at Smith the whole four years, you know.
Yes, what CTEC did last year is that they accepted, they usually accept a certain amount of students knowing that some aren't going to stay, but they took extra students. So this year, there are no 10th grade positions for a 10th grader, let's say, who could apply as a 10th grader from the high school to Columbia, right? But you can't now. They did leave some spots, the Smith kids, that they knew might have to come back. But there technically, if you were a 10th grader hoping to get into CTEC, you were not allowed this year. They had, they filled up their classes. People didn't leave, so they didn't have those openings.
Okay.
That's a funny. So, so if the students who leave or didn't get in, did they just come back?
They stayed in high school.
Okay, that's moving.
I mean, you know, a driving factor two behind Smith is our graduating seniors there this year. There's only five of them. So the incoming grade nine students, it's, it's a larger group. So the cost, you know, not only does the tuition rate go up, I think it went up 3.78% from 24 to 25 per pupil, but the amount goes up too. So that's a large driver. Out-of-district special ed tuition is a large driver as well. You probably recall us talking ad nauseam about the 14% OSD increase in tuitions from 23 to 24. The increase from 24 to 25 is 4.69, which, you know, sitting next to 14 doesn't sound bad. But if you go back to like FY 11 or 12, somebody on our list served did it. The average before the 14% jump for all those years was like, you know, under two. It was like, so it's usually very low and, you know, the 14 was a killer. The 4.69 is better, but it's still, you know, it's not great.
Yeah.
You know, so really, I mean, besides wanting to keep the positions that we, you know, have in, in grants because the student needs are still there, fixed costs are driving our, our budget increase. I mean, whether it's tuition, whether it's utilities, because, you know, your electric bill, you see it. Yeah, ours is, yeah.
Yours is probably a little bigger than mine.
Yeah.
Pretty big. Transportation too, I mean, that's, you know,
Yeah.
Particularly special ed transportation. Our Durham contract for regular ed, it's, the increase is only 3% going into next year, going into the third year of our contract with them. That's very good right now because there's districts that are going up 10, 12%, you know, and talking to other business managers that are out to bid for transportation now. So 3% is good. You know, special ed though, that, that's higher. That's 7% going into next year. We have quite a, we have 10 in district vans, we have three pre-K vans, and then we've got transportation for the students that are out of district. Some students traveling as far as Connecticut, believe it or not. So that adds up quick. So, you know, our, our drivers are largely fixed costs. You know, we, we really went through a stringent process with, with our administrative leadership team for one and, you know, really took a look and, you know, what can we reduce here, there? But, you know, position-wise, there really wasn't anything we could find except for that vacant position that wouldn't really hurt going into next year. Throughout the budget process, I mean, if you saw the number we started with, you know, back in, you know, I mean, basically what I do after my salary projections are done, I give templates to all the principals and directors for all the accounts, not personnel, but all their expense accounts that they would control. And I tell them to fill it out, not that you're necessarily going to get everything asked for, but we need to start somewhere. While they're working on that, I do all the district-wide stuff, like the transportation calculations, the tuition calculations, utilities, you know, all that stuff. And once I do that and get all my stuff back from principals and directors, I throw it all into a master spreadsheet and I look at the total and I go, ooh. And then that's when we.
Did it double this number?
It was, well, I think we started at like 13 or something. Oh, do you want me to pause?
Is that? No, this is, just, it just keeps doing that. I like restarts. Yeah, I don't know. It, it doesn't seem to be affecting the people online, so.
Right, it's still recording.
Okay. So, you know, through the process, we, you know, we reduced what we could, where we could and, you know, supplies and, you know, some contract services, things like that. And then what we, we did was look to other funding sources. I mean, you know, with a huge COVID relief grant expiring, you know, we had to look at other funding sources. The general fund can't absorb everything. So we, we looked at School Choice and Circuit Breaker. So, you know, we, we are proposing to use $1.2 million of School Choice, but you don't, you don't see that here. But, you know, to go against our, our, our spending this year or going into next year. The last few years, we've used, you know, the, well, when I got here, we had quite the deficit. When I closed the year, we used about $1.3 million to close FY '22. FY '23, I think we ended up at about 833, which was under what was budgeted. FY '24, there will be a deficit at the end. How much at this point? I can't quite pinpoint. I'll be doing a forecast in the next couple of weeks to get there, but we will likely have to use more than we budgeted. For this, and that's okay. I mean, that happens. I mean, costs come up during the year that aren't expected. They have to be funded somehow. But also sometimes positions are vacant during the year for periods of time and you save money that way. So I mean, you know, once June 30th hits and you start, you know, doing transfers and things like that, you'll really get a good picture, but I do anticipate using more School of Choice than was budgeted this year. Circuit Breaker is the key funding source now. Do you want me to explain Circuit Breaker at all?
It's been a, about a year since we've discussed this. So why, why for, yeah, sure.
Absolutely. Circuit Breaker is basically reimbursement that the state provides for higher than what, you know, could be considered typical special education costs would be. Basically every year, the state creates a threshold number, like, you know, I think going into FY '25, it's like 51,000 something. So if you spent more than that educating a student, and that could include their transportation if they're in an out-of-district placement, service, even services they get in district, although it's, it's rare to have somebody hit that threshold in district. It's really students that are out of district, it's their tuition that'll get you there. So basically what happens is you fill out a claim form when the school year ends. And for the amount that you're over that $51,000 threshold, the state will reimburse up to 75% of that. And they'll reimburse, in FY '24, they reimbursed 57% of transportation. The goal is higher, but it kind of depends on the budget that they have to work with. So, you know, that amount that we get, like for instance, what we claimed last year and got for reimbursement this year, we can carry that over into next year to the amount that we're able to. You can't carry more than a year's worth over though. So what I started with this year in Circuit Breaker was about $159,800, you know, something like that. My balance at the end of FY '24 can't be more than that plus the revenue we got this year. Like that $159's got to go. And it will. It's already gone. Like, we've already done some journal entries to move some tuition there. There will be more when the year closes for sure. But what we had the benefit of, of the opportunity to do this year was apply for extraordinary relief, which is through the Circuit Breaker program, but it's for when you have costs that are so much higher than last year in this current year. And many, many districts did it because of the 14% increase. That was the driver. In fact, DESI created a second bucket of money, they're calling reserve relief to help with that. So we, we applied and filled out the claim form and, and we got our figure last week of the relief we'll get. So that, that will be good. Between the two buckets, we will get $600 and something thousand dollars of relief. 376 of it have to be spent by the end of this year because extraordinary relief has to be spent by the end of the year it's claimed in.
The rest is not really extraordinary.
Exactly. And that's their.
Calendar year or?
Physical year. So, and we'll have no problem doing that, as I said. The rest of that is from the other bucket, the reserve relief bucket. That can be carried over into next year, but that amount will come off our Circuit Breaker claim for next year. So when our special ed director does that in July, whatever we end up getting for revenue, they're going to back out what we're getting from reserve release. So basically it's like getting it early is what it is, which is fine. We'll probably spend some of it. My goal is to spend as little as possible because we definitely budgeted quite a bit of Circuit Breaker to go against next year. 720,000 I budgeted, most for tuition, some for transportation. So we did really look to other funding sources as much as we could to lower this as much as we could. As I said, we started much higher than we ended up. We had a series of, of meetings with, with different stakeholders and, you know, we got to where we got to. A note regarding School Choice, the amount we're using, 1.2 million will go towards staff. It will go towards transportation and also electricity. Those are the three things. However, the amount we're budgeting leaves us enough to get through FY '26 with being able to budget quite a bit. But after FY '26, we're no longer going to be able to budget more than we project our revenue will be for School Choice. It'll be gone and we'll have nothing to, you know, get us through an emergency if something were to happen other than requesting an appropriation.
Right.
You know, we, you know, past few years, we budgeted more in School Choice than we were going to take in revenue, but it was there. I mean, a couple of years ago, that balance was what, like 2.3 or something million? It was there. You can do that for a couple of years. You just can't do it for 10.
Right.
So that will be a driving factor going into '27, you know, when we get there. But in any event, trying to check if there's anything else you want me to go through. I mean, really, the budget is a needs-based budget. I mean, we looked at what the kids are presenting with, both academically and, you know, emotionally. And, you know, are, you know, built a budget with staff and supports to meet those needs. We are reallocating an elementary teaching position to go to the middle school to be an interventionist. Basically, you know, it's a, you know, provide general education support for students that aren't necessarily succeeding in the classroom, but might not need special education services. Currently, the middle school doesn't have that. And we feel that's a huge need. I mean, for one, I was a seventh grade teacher for 13 years and those years make or break some kids for sure. Because as they go into high school, you get closer to, you know, dropout age. And if you're not on a good track, you know, so it's, it's really crucial to, to catch those kids in, you know, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. Help them, help them create a positive perception of school. Because I mean, sometimes when you start succeeding, you build confidence, all of a sudden you start like at school. So, you know, due to class size changes and, you know, basically students matriculating through grade levels, we don't need as many teachers at one grade level that we're able to reallocate. reallocate that and provide a crucial support, which will also probably help us, um, lower our special education numbers too.
Fantastic.
Um.
Just that's a level service budget too.
Yes. Yeah. This budget represents a level service budget.
Correct.
Um, it keeps class sizes about where they have been, um, which I know is certainly important to the community. Um, you know, as I said, it doesn't really add anything. It reduces the, the one vacant special ed position. It brings back the E L teacher. Um, the only increases is, uh, one, um, high school staff member increasing from 0.67 to 0.83.
Okay.
Um, however, that cost is also covered by somebody, um, having to leave of absence for part of next year. That's unpaid. So that salary just moves there. It doesn't increase the budget at all.
Okay.
Um, you know, we'll have our normal grants, our special education grants that we get, our title grants, um, which do provide critical support to students who need it. Um, our athletic revolving account, there's about a hundred and $2,000 budgeted out of there too. You know, but we take in revenue throughout the year as well from gate receipts and from, um, user fees and co- cooperative teams pay us, like North Hampton pays us to be on our hockey team.
I see.
Um, but we also foot all the bills for wheeling for the ice, which I'm not cheap, as you can imagine. So, um, so yeah, we've looked at really a lot of different funding sources to, um, you, you know, to, to get this as low as we possibly can while still building a budget that provides the staff and supports that, that kids need as they continue to recover from the pandemic. Um, but also pays for the, the fixed costs that continue to increase that we really don't have any control over. Um, so at that, I think I'll probably open up different questions that people might have. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add that, uh, superintendent?
Uh, just that, you know, we did have requests from quite a few parents to add programs like world language at the middle school, um, into technology training to meet the standards. Um, however, that's a plan that we're formulating for the future that we were not able to add it to this plan, but it's been heard what they had to say, and we're trying to figure out what else we can do that's not at a cost for us. Uh, so it gives the experience of world language next year in the sixth to eight, but it will not be a teacher because we obviously can't afford it, but it's a future goal for us to try to meet the needs.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just, you know, um, wine, I appreciate the work, uh, both the superintendent and business manager, school committee, um, just around where we got to the budget and, and the, the budget that was eventually presented to me is putting the total budget together. Um, I think that the a lot of, of how things came together was to look in a new way at the same old dollars and understanding that there were things going to increase that were well out of our control. Um, and that combined with rearrangement or reshuffling of curriculum during the year, what's coming forward. I appreciate like world language was a, a thing that came up or, uh, over and over again and, and being thoughtful about adding those programs that are sustainable. So not just like, this is what we want. We've got the money this year and not, um, I think made a lot of, a lot of sense. Uh, but you know, in the, the past, talking about use of like school choice and, um, and closing deficits that the the process last year, this year have been very transparent. There are a lot of moving parts. Um, and while there might be deficits, there's definitely willingness in this school administration to go see what was unspent or position's not filled or, um, something that was just underspent or maybe a grant came in. So whatnot is, is appreciated, but I, I think we got to this budget number, um, much more quickly. Um, I think it was any two conversations. The first one was like, wow. Um, the second one was, you know, okay, we can do that.
All right.
And then we were done.
Counselors, any, any additional questions?
I thought it was pretty straightforward and pretty level.
Just, I've asked everybody this and I know you've done a very thorough job of this, but is, is a fair budget to you? Any concerns? Like?
No, I think this is a fair budget. I, I do. I, I mean, we are, uh, we are in quite interesting budget times. If you've been paying attention to the state level stuff and um, districts across the, the state are, are a lot of them are looking at layoffs. Um, locally too. I mean, you can pick up the Gazette any given day and you know, read about, um, some places that are not too far from us and places that are in the eastern part of the state are looking at massive cuts. Um, and you know, we, um, are luckily not in that boat. Um, you know, i- i- as I said, it is a higher than normal ask. I mean, I don't think a 9.78% school budget increases is likely something that any of you have seen in your years on the, the finance on community here. Um, but you know, what's in here, as I said, is, is it's essential to keep the services level and to continue to help kids recover. Um, which is frankly taking longer than I think people thought it was going to. You know, I mean, you've, you've all heard of long COVID, but you know, it's the long recovery in schools. It really is. I, you know, and for families too. I mean, the pandemic did it, did its toll on, on adults too. It really did. Um, so you know, that, that being said, this keeps our staff in place. This keeps supports in place for kids that we, we currently have. This factors in the increased cost of all the stuff that we can't control. And we're not looking at at what a lot of places around here are. And, and for that I would say, yeah, that this is a, a fair budget. I, I would say that.
Well, I just want to say that acknowledging that not every department has a business manager, that I wish I could get this presentation for every section of the budget. This was super helpful. I feel like I really had a good understanding. I, well, I'm sure that if I had to repeat it, you would say, I don't have a good understanding. I think that in a lot of ways, I feel like I, I understand from a narrative perspective, the, the decision that are me being made and the pressures that are facing you. And I, I feel like I have a better understanding now of, if something, it's a thing that, that gets me. I don't want to editorialize about this too much, but the thing that gets me as, as a finance uh, committee member often is that we'll get these appropriations at some point and it's sort of like, well, okay, but you must've seen that coming, right? And I, I feel, I feel like I have a really good place here of sort of understanding, like these are the pressures facing you. Here's what you're doing to adjust them. Here's what if it happens, it's going to be a thing. Here's what you're kind of anticipating happening. And that I feel like makes, puts me in a position where I feel very comfortable saying, okay, this is the game plan. You know, there's a lot of uncertainties, but this is what we're gonna, we're gonna go for. Yeah.
So, um, this school department under MGL has, um, mechanisms to reclassify expenses that don't require, um, appropriations. So movement along up and down the journal entries happen to the, I mean, and not because there's anything wrong with them to the tune of sometimes a, a million dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, so I, I think that the budget is spot on. I, I and, um, I will just say that school money is, um, under MGL, very much treated differently.
Absolutely. I wasn't suggesting that it's not.
Appropriations like that, we come forward with the different. There's reason. School has to move quick, right? A kid comes in with a lot of needs or leaves or vice versa. There needs to be a reclassification. Um, and also the flexibility, I think is really important for school and well-used by school in that it amazes me the timing of the money, like the reimbursement, like it's, it's based on a number two years ago and then, and then you don't get this money and then you don't. So it's a, you know,
Right.
Nick and I had a conversation about like negotiations and, and what will happen and how to give the, and he was like, well, we've got see the, the census in October. Like it was amazing, the different factors even before a settling of a country. So, um, I just wanted, yeah, you know,
For sure.
A tender point with me about the appropriation.
And, and it's not, it's not so much about the appropriation. So there, there's obviously some nuance there and maybe I, I, I really just meant that in terms of communicating how a budget's formulated, what are the pressures you're facing, what your strategy is for facing this? I was really satisfied with what this was and and acknowledging that not every department has sort of the, the staff to necessarily, um, you know, formulate that in the, in this way, but I, I really did just appreciate how that came through. So thank you.
Just a comment, no question, but, uh, as, as an educator, right, I want to, uh, acknowledge and, and say that I appreciate the, um, attentiveness to student need. Um, basically you articulated that we're still out of a crisis, but still in a crisis, right? And it, and it hasn't gone away. Um, and I work with college students, right? And I see the same types of COVID, post-COVID kind of incidences, right? And uh, and, and turns around mental health and need and et cetera. So the fact that you've worked really hard to be able to maintain positions um, and bring back positions, like I said, that were, I think really very, very important. Um, you know, I, I appreciate the work that you and teachers and staff and everything to, um, to make this level funding as well, you know, as well as you know, recognizing the rest of the needs of the community and things like that. So I, I appreciate the amount of work that you put into this.
Thank you. Great. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, if we have any other questions, we can, uh, maybe shoot you an email, but I turn now and I think that's all I've got.
Now regarding next Monday, I, I believe that's when you're scheduled to vote to send the whole budget to the whole council, correct? Do we need to be there? I'm only asking because I'm going to be on my way to a conference. I can call in if you need me. I just want to make sure I know what I'm supposed to do.
I think if you don't hear from anybody, then we probably don't have any additional questions.
All right.
But if there's a counselor, we obviously cannot all be on the same email talking, but if there's counselors to say, hey, I was hoping you could come clarify this, then I mean, maybe that can be done via email. If not, you could.
Well, if you just want to shoot me an email and ask me if I can call in, that's fine. I'll just be driving somewhere. I can easily call in. Um, and, and talk while I drive. I just want to, you know, make sure I'm prepared to do that if I have to.
Right. That's all. I, I think you'll, you're, unless somebody, unless you hear, otherwise you're probably fine.
Okay. And, and I'll certainly be at the, at the full council meeting.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a great one.
Yes.
That's your.
Sounds very interesting.
How could you not?
Bye. See you. Have a good night.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Finally we've got debt and interest.
All of the borrowing that's been done, that needs to be paid back. The, um, principal is some of the debts borrowings have had, um, you can do a level debt fund or you can do a staggered, which some of this is staggered. So in the past few years, it was a little bit lower. The principal goes up, the interest goes down. Um, it's been mass clean water trust loans, the school loans.
Okay. Uh.
Questions I can answer.
I don't have any, well, yeah. Is there, I, well, I guess the question that always gets asked these things is where are we in paying down these, you know, area? Is there anything that we can anticipate coming off soon or? Okay.
There's the long-term debt or up to FY38.
Okay.
FY29 it drops.
And that's, which one's that that comes off in 29?
It, it's actually a break in the, the school. Uh, the Mountain View, we built in a break.
Okay.
Um, in the schedule, the, the drops and that 2.9 million in, um, in the original borrowing. And then you'll see in 32, there's another gap. Um, that, you know, doesn't make sense because the next year it kind of goes up. Um, that was somewhat purposeful. Um, it's very favorable bonding, uh, offering conditions then, but also the anticipation would be um, that there could be something with that gap, that 2.9 drop um, in 29, in 32, that like a roof needs to be replaced, that we have, uh, you know, we've come back for authorization, but the debt load on, uh, the taxpayer would not like. It's not like all of a sudden it goes up another 22%. And there's a healthy amount of debt we shouldn't carry to keep up with capital improvements. Um, we're well within that, 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 um, that healthy debt amount with no big plans to, um, uh, to, to ask for bonded authorization. We'll take authorization, maybe everybody done it with the rest of Honeywell. So I asked for $6 million for Honeywell. We are not going to bond out for the rest. Um, and authorization for the little things.
Just 1.4.
We did 1.4 of Honeywell. So the rest of that, we will formally say to rescind it. Rescind it. We'll rescind it. So it won't be on the books. It doesn't show that. Yeah. Basically the credit card of that, uh, bond is not something we're accessing. Uh, the one thing I would just to, you know, um, mention here and, and for public as well, uh, there was a thought, kind of a plan to do some bonding this spring for park recreation and, um, and, and maybe some smaller, uh, in capital items we have uncooled and the, uh, we, uh, refinancing of the school closeout. Long-term bonds, just for what we needed the money, like what we have done with the money. Um, long-term farm market just wasn't real favorable.
That's great, sir.
Yeah. And this short term that we have, it's good. We can keep it for three years. Um, to the point where we're going to, yeah, I mentioned in my message, we're keeping an eye on the market.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and seeing if there's something advantageous that comes up. Looking at, you know, in the third year of a short-term debt, you need to pay a part of principal down. Maybe we go right up to that line or we even pay some of the principal down as required and then do a long-term bond then. Um, it, it's a lot of money. But in the overall, it's not enough money where I felt like we should incur the cost of, um, of bonding. I have another bonding call and reauthorization and whatnot. Let's stay where we are. It's, it's a competitive enough long-term, I mean, short, uh, term lending. So, or borrowing. So I mean, that's little, I think, you know, somebody wrote up this like, well, wait a minute, we thought, um, we're going to X, Y, Z. The market's just not there.
Right. Any questions, counselors?
I mean, it's our debts. We got to pay them.
Yes.
I don't really know what happened. Okay. Well, I think that's it for our agenda tonight, right? It was just those two things. So unless anyone has any questions, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Yeah. Now, and that's, yeah, we're really in our debt pose. We're hoping to have.